We can call the meeting to order. And Eric is joining us by teams. Other than that, we're all here. Alright, so the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Would you like to do that?
Yeah.
Jim? Any changes, errors, omissions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And then accounts payable for information.
I'll make that motion.
Shawna?
I have a couple of questions. The first one... Is transitional solutions consulting and it's forty percent complete, what project was that for?
That's the Firehouse Study.
Well, that's the Firehouse Study, okay. And the other one was silicon contracting, the concrete pad for the rectangle. Where was that concrete pad?
That concrete pad was the new doors that were installed on the north side of the building. It's just a little, little pad so that you can go into the doors from outside.
Okay. When they installed the new doors, they had to correct the area there?
Yeah.
That was all, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, receiving for information? Opposed? That is carried. And then moving on to delegations. We have Quentin Randall.
Yes, sir.
With Pep, here to make a presentation. Welcome, Quentin.
Yeah, thanks for having me, everybody.
Yep, you can just go ahead and start, we're ready.
Okay, so can I share my screen with you guys?
If you want to.
To make things easier, um, I'm just gonna have a look here. If I can't figure it out quick, then we'll just move on, how's that sound?
Eric believes you can do that, Quentin. There should be three dots up at the top of your screen. Right-hand side.
Enter full screen showing. I don't see it.
It's right beside the mute button, in between the mute and the leave button.
We do have it on the board as well.
Okay, you're okay, so you guys do have it on the board, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just go off my, off of my screen then, and then, uh, yeah, then we can, we can, uh, yeah, let's just do that. Um, anyways, thanks for having me, folks. Um, I'm here, um, I'm, uh, I'm essentially the manager, not essentially, I am the new manager of Palisar Economic Partnership. I replaced Walter Valentini, if any of you folks had him. And Eric is, is a member of our executive committee, and so he and I were talking, and one thing that we like to do every year anyways is talk to, you know, our member communities, and Redcliffe is obviously one of them. And other than, other than Eric, I don't, I don't think I actually know any of you folks, so I wish I could have been there in person, but COVID is what it is, and so we're doing this digitally for now. If you're unfamiliar with Pep, with Palisar Economic Partnership, really quickly, it's essentially a group of twenty municipalities, municipal communities, the city of Medicine Hat, municipal districts across southeast Alberta. So it reaches as far north as Consort, all the way down to the US border, includes Redcliffe, includes Medicine Hat, includes Cypress County, and, you know, so on. One of the most important, well, one of the main initiatives that we are undertaking this year, we're calling it market entry and investment attraction. And so this initiative is being funded in part through member contributions from folks like, you know, from, from the town of Redcliffe and from everyone else. But we've also matched that funding with provincial funds, um, through the, uh, it's called the Cares Program, which is, it's not operational anymore in the government of Alberta, but we got in on the last round. And it's also being funded federally through CAN Export Community Investments. And so the thing I wanted to do today was just share this program with you, uh, really briefly, just so that you get a sense of what Palisar Economic Partnership is doing for you folks. And then, you know, how we can work together in the future. And, yeah, so anyways, we'll get into that. So if, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna talk about the project first, then talk about the problem, you know, and then the opportunity that we saw, and then I'm gonna kind of walk through the process. Uh, and that'll take about ten minutes. Does that sound, is that good timing for you folks?
That'll work.
Okay, perfect. So anyways, the project, you know, at a really high level, we say it's new market entry and investment attraction. And so my background, I, you know, I have a, a marketing and sales background for the past, um, you know, twelve years now. And I have a certificate in international trade, and so, you know, I've, I've got, I'm fairly well-versed in, you know, risk mitigation and in, you know, sourcing investments, sourcing projects, and kind of connecting projects and businesses with markets. And so the ultimate goal of this, obviously, same as all economic development, is to grow existing businesses and attract new investment. One of the problems here, so by the numbers, ninety-nine percent of small businesses in Canada are small, or ninety-nine percent of businesses in Canada are small and medium enterprises. Those ninety-nine percent make up fifty percent of national gross domestic product, but only four percent of these small businesses' sales come from international sources. So when we look at that, um, essentially, kind of what that tells me is that all of the small businesses in Canada, they're all selling to each other, they're all selling, you know, elsewhere in Canada. And a tiny little sliver of that ends up being, ends up coming from international sources. And while there's a, you know, there's a, I'm gonna say a long road to get to international sales, it is a road that can be followed. And again, it comes from, you know, connecting the market to the product that we have in Canada, understanding how to work with the border, um, understanding where, how to work with your freight forwarders, and how to work with customs brokers and all that sort of stuff. And so I already have those connections, and so, you know, when the time is right for businesses, we just connect them into, into that network and help them get their products out. At the same time, there are a lot of businesses that go to try and find investment, or they go to try and find, you know, financing to expand their business. Maybe they need to, you know, build a new building, or maybe they need to get some equipment, or, you know, anything like that. Along with this program, one of the things that we're doing is if a business is there, and let's say an investor comes to them, you know, or if they go to an investor and the investor says, "Yeah, you know what, I'm interested," and then they'll give a list of things that they need, you know, whether it's historical financials or, you know, whatever, even questions like, "How are you gonna mitigate this risk? How are you gonna mitigate that risk?" Oftentimes, what happens in those conversations is that the, the business either doesn't have the time, or the ability, or the inclination to actually put those answers down on paper. The program that we're actually running, funded through the federal government and through the provincial government, is, is, is really to put that down on paper for them, so that they can go back to their investor, or they can go back to whoever's financing them, and say, "This is what we got." And so we actually have a, a, a former commercial banker developing those plans for us. And really what that piece, where that comes from, is we've had conversations with Invest Alberta, which is the new economic development group for the province, and they've said lots that as Albertan economic developers, we're excellent openers and terrible closers. And so what they mean by that is that, you know, we're great at telling the story about low corporate tax rates, and, you know, inexpensive land, and lots of skilled labor. We're really great at telling that whole story. But when it comes down to, with an investor, the investor asking, "Okay, what is it that you need from us, and what is our return gonna be?" Well, questions along those, along those lines, usually that's where the conversations fall apart. And so what Palisar Economic Partnership is doing now is we're actually trying to say, um, you know what, we're gonna help the businesses in our region answer those questions clearly and definitively and realistically. And so that's, you know, that's, um, that's a big piece of what we're, what we're trying to accomplish here. You know, one of the, well, just, I, I get asked once in a while, like, why are we looking at export markets? Why are we looking at trying to get into, why are we trying to take southeast Alberta businesses and connect them to, um, to new markets? You know, lots of people, or some people say, you know, it's either risky, or maybe the market's not there, or, you know, whatever, there's a lot of reasons for it, and it is complex stuff. So, you know, Global Affairs Canada, they produced a chart showing that, um, you know, if you have, if you take your existing product and put it into a new market, you're gonna see, you know, gains in terms of, you know, employment is gonna go up five percent, um, you know, wages see an increase, your sales see an increase, everything like that. You know, sees an increase. That's if you're doing the same product that you make in Canada, selling to an international market. If you are a company that wants to develop a new product and sell it into a new market, um, you still see gains. They're not as big as if you just take your product to a new market, obviously, because you have less research and development to do and everything like that. So that's all just kind of a quick way of saying that if we have the ability to reach into new markets and get our businesses in this region to sell into new markets, whether it's the United States, or, you know, Europe, or Asia, or wherever, Canada actually has, I believe it's like sixty percent of the world population tied up in pretty strong free trade agreements that allow us to sell our products into, into new markets. So that's, that's, that's why we're looking at that. And so then, the solution, like I said, the solution that we come up with is to identify the businesses that are, that are operating in our region, that wanna grow. And so they either wanna grow, like I said before, from attracting new investments to, to sell to a new market. Now, it can be within Canada, or it can be without, or, you know, from outside of Canada. But that's what we're trying to do, is identify those companies that, that already have a little bit of a track record, or at least have a really great idea and a strong leadership team, and then we actually will help take them to the point where an investor or a buyer is actually willing to write a check for it. And so essentially, this is a last, this is a four-step process. So the first step is to identify the local producers. And so I work with essentially everyone in the network, and so, you know, Eric and I have talked about this. I talk about it with the rest of the Palisar Economic Partnership Board. I work with all of the other economic developers within the Palisar region, I believe there's five of them. You know, so I work with all of those folks to identify the businesses. You know, we have the meetings to see where they're at, and then, you know, explain to them what we're, what, you know, what we're, what we're doing and how we can help them. This, so identifying the local businesses, this is the most important step, because without the businesses, we're all kind of just, you know, we're all kind of just navel-gazing and talking about how great it is to do business in southeast Alberta, which is all true, but at the end of the day, business has to be able to sell to business. And so, you know, I, I try to work as hard as I can at, at, at identifying those local businesses. So everyone I talk to, I ask, if you know of somebody who, who looks like they're in a position to grow their business, I would, I would appreciate an introduction, and then we can kind of walk down this path for them. There's no cost to the businesses to participate, hundred percent covered by the province and by the federal government. So let's say we get, let's say you introduce us to a business. You sit down and they talk to them, and they make widgets, and they wanna sell those widgets into California, for example. We under, we, we come in to learn about their business from them, and where they see the opportunity, and why they see the opportunity there. We go away and we verify that with, with, you know, really high-quality, verifiable trade data that, you know, match, so they're basically just to verify their data. And we provide a, you know, a, a brief report, whether, you know, one, one example that we have is somebody wanted to produce, um, uh, water screens for irrigation. And they were talking about going into the Pacific Northwest in the United States. And so we looked at that market, did verify it, but we also uncovered opportunities in California and in Phoenix as well. You know, so that's just an example of, of how that works. And so after that, we talk with the businesses, we say, "Okay, this is the product you have, this is how it can get into, um, the hands of your customers." Through, and again, this is through, you know, this is what the board, this is how the border is gonna treat your product. This is what you're gonna have to think about in terms of freight, and warehousing, and distribution. If there are any other government departments, like, do we need to include Health Canada? Or do we need to include, you know, like textile agencies, or, you know, whatever, depending on your product. So we kind of come back with all of those recommendations that are based in, in, in real, like in reality. And then if at that point the business says, "You know what, I am interested in this, let's take it a step further," we essentially put together a bit of a, um, a trade costing analysis, or a cash flow analysis. So this is essentially all the costs that are involved in moving a product from, say, Redcliffe to California. And, you know, again, that is, what is the, what is the freight charge to get it to, I mean, I'm just making everything up, but like, what's the freight charge? Are you gonna truck it to Lethbridge and then get it on a train there? Are you just gonna truck it, you know, like, at what point is it, is it gonna get on a train? Is it ever gonna do that? What is the tariff rate? You know, what taxes do you have to pay? You know, what are your shipping costs, what, you know, everything like that. So we put everything together, and then we take that back to the business. And then the business has a really clear, realistic picture that if they are making a hundred widgets a day and selling them to California, it is, are they gonna make money or not? You know, so we're able to come in at, at that certain, that, that level of detail. And then we put together a, a package, basically a full package, that, that the businesses can then take to either their buyers or their investors. And again, this isn't, uh, this isn't an academic exercise, this is actually intended to get checks, get checks, uh, written, so that the businesses that are here in Redcliffe can actually, you know, um, do what they say they wanna do. So, you know, I know I've seen a lot of economic development stuff in the past, I know you folks have as well, that say, and I know the sentiment has changed, but I think you'll understand my point. You know what, we should go to China, because China has three and a half billion people, and the middle class is growing, and there's a ton of money over there. So I think all of that is true. However, um, on the China side specifically, we all know that we're in the middle of a trade war, and doing business with China is sometimes uneasy, I guess, to say the least. And we also don't know who we're selling to. I mean, there's three and a half billion people, but I always think in terms of who's gonna actually write the check over there, and we actually don't know. So this answers a lot of those questions. We say, you know, let's just use the China example again. Maybe we decide China is the place, because whatever we're making in Redcliffe, they need over there, they're willing to pay, they're willing to cooperate. You know, we can, and we can get it over there. But instead of saying, "It's going to China," it says, "We're going to find the people over there who are willing to write the checks, whether it's a distributor arrangement, or whether you're gonna use an agent, or, or just sell direct." You know, we use this program to, to solve all those questions. And then step four, um, you know, I always say, if you can see it on the screen, this is where the rubber hits the road. And so this is essentially, we take all the packages back to the businesses, and then if they want to proceed, you know, if you have a business in Redcliffe that wants to proceed and go down this path, um, we'll walk that path with them. We will actually do introductions between the business here and Export Development Canada, if they need trade financing, or, you know, the trade offices in the markets that, that, that make the most sense to go into. And those trade offices can be provincial, or they can be federal. You know, we have good relationships with, with most of those offices, and I can tell you that the ones that we don't have good relationships for, if we bring them a business that's ready to go, um, I've, I've experienced it happen multiple times, where you will actually, they're, they're basically begging for people that are actually ready to do business. And so if we walk them, if we walk our businesses through this process, and then introduce them to a potential, um, you know, a potential new market, there's a lot of enthusiasm there and willingness to work with us. And again, I'm talking a lot about, you know, kind of, you know, foreign investment and foreign trade. We are working with businesses elsewhere in the Palisar region who, who are trying to enter, like, the Vancouver market, because that's their, that's their logical next step. You know what I mean? So we're not necessarily saying, "If you're not ready to go overseas, we don't wanna talk to you." We are working, and, yeah, we are working on, um, you know, the international deals, but we are also working on, on smaller, closed-in stuff. Because there's, there's, there's just lots of potential everywhere. You know, kind of the last point I wanna say is that this is all a very collaborative approach, and it has to be. So, you know, first step is, you know, the municipal economic development, as well as, you know, folks like you, anyone who's kind of out in the community, who knows what's going on, that knows, you know, who has the interest in expanding, who has, you know, who, who has, well, yeah, who has the interest and who has the ability to expand. Obviously, the businesses in our region, the businesses in Redcliffe are, are essential to all of this, because at the end of the day, they're the ones that are selling it. And obviously, you know, the benefit for Redcliffe and for every other community within Palisar Economic Partnership is, is if we can help these customers, if we can help our businesses, you know, I'm just gonna say, reach these new markets, or expand their business, that's increased tax revenue for you folks. You know, at the city level, at the municipal level, it's increased, um, employment, which is obviously always, you know, very important. And, and so anyways, that's, you know, that's how we're approaching economic development. And then obviously, the third piece of this is Palisar Economic Partnership. You know, so as much as possible, we're, we're doing this work. And the thing I always like to point out is, there's a lot of people saying, "This is how this should be done." You know, "Go find somebody to do it." That's kind of the message I've heard throughout my years, is, and this is, you know, this, this is a smart thing to do, go find somebody to do it. So we're actually coming in to try and fill that gap, and say, "You know what, this is the thing that lots of people have told us to do. We wanna come in, and we're, we're actually gonna be the ones to, to do it." So businesses that wanna participate and work with us will actually end up with pretty solid, like I said, realistic plans and steps forward. So anyways, that's, that's essentially that program that we are, that we're, you know, that we're offering to all of, all of our Palisar Economic Partnership members, and the businesses that operate within, you know, the municipalities that, that, that we serve. We do have funding for this program for about another year. But I will tell you that these programs, these funding programs, are gonna open up again in the fall. The federal one is the most important one, and that is a well-established, um, uh, funding program. And so, you know, we're, I would say we're in no danger of that, that money going away, but we always are looking for other options. So, like I said, as it is right now, one year, I'm about four and a half months into this position, into this work. And I, you know, I've, I'm, I don't know what you folks think tonight, you know, I'd like to hear some questions, but this is, this has had a good response elsewhere, and I would like, I would love the opportunity to, um, you know, work with you folks, you know, to bring this to, to Redcliffe as well. Because you are members, um, you know, and I do appreciate, I really do, as the new guy at the table, I really do appreciate the opportunity to, to share this with you, and to have, you know, at least another year, hopefully longer, to, to work with you folks through this. So I could probably keep talking forever, but I don't want to, you guys probably don't want me to either. So, um, yeah, if we can open it up to questions or anything like that, um, you know, I'd love to hear from you folks.
Okay, thank you. Quentin, uh, first question, I guess Chris Schember has one.
Hi, Quentin. This project seems to be primarily based on manufacturing, which we don't have a lot of in this area. What kind of success rate do you predict with this program, with that in mind?
Sorry, Chris, I missed just the last, the last, the last bit there, but, you know, I'll try to answer based on, on what I heard, so.
The end wasn't very important.
So we, um, you know, it's, it's honestly based on anything, uh, you know, any business. We, I'd even honestly look at service-based businesses, um, you know, it's a little, that's a little bit of a unique situation. But a lot of it honestly has been agricultural-related, which, you know, I know that doesn't necessarily help Redcliffe directly, but anything value-added, um, you know, any processing or anything like that could, you know, could be done and probably would be done in, um, you know, I'm gonna say bigger centers, like, not, not massive centers, but, you know, like Redcliffe and places like that. But having said that, we are also looking at, well, you know, like you said, manufacturing. And ultimately, at the end of the day, business is business. We don't try to understand very fine details of how everyone does business, we just wanna understand what it is, you know, that somebody makes, or grows, or has, or whatever, you know, and how they can move it. Am I right in, like, Redcliffe's primarily still, um, you know, greenhouses, right? I know you have a bunch of industrial land, especially north of Ohio, but am I right in, in assuming that it's still primarily a greenhouse?
Yes, that's correct. We still have a lot of greenhouse agricultural here, not really
Yeah.
growing at the time, but, uh, but it is still your processing with a local co-op is here.
Yeah.
Processing and distribution, distribution here.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, you know, that's, yeah, that's all, that's all very helpful. So the last thing I'll say, if you guys, you guys probably heard lots of comments over the years, and some of you are probably actually greenhouse growers in there. On my side, I know I've heard a lot about like, "Well, why don't they just grow, uh, or why don't they just make salsa out in Redcliffe with, you know?" It's like, wow, that's a good question, I don't know the answer to that. But I also don't wanna just come into everyone's community and say, "You know what, you guys should probably make salsa, and if you don't, I can't help you." You know what I mean? Like, I'd much rather have you folks come to us, because you and your businesses are the ones that know, know your business. And, and we can work together to find, you know, the market and find the opportunity. Maybe salsa isn't an opportunity, but I wanna get out of that mode of saying, "You guys should be doing this." You know, it's the same thing with hemp. For years and decades, we've been telling farmers to grow hemp, and that industry is going up and down like, like, uh, like a seesaw. I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna tell people that. If someone comes with a good idea, and they says, say that they, they wanna pursue it, I'm game, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna be so prescriptive like that, if that makes sense.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I will add to Chris's question. I know Roy's Woodshop, um, they were able to capitalize on some of the Pep's, Pep's work. Same thing with Red Hat Co-op. I know, uh, Home Hardware, a few years ago, they were working on selling to the, the Army Base Batus, and they've done a lot of work, and we, we did some training for them on selling to government, and, uh, that was very helpful. I know, so, that there's several, several businesses in, in Redcliffe that have certainly utilized Pep's expertise in the day.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate that, Eric. Can I just make, I wanna, I wanna let you folks get on with your meeting, but Roy's Woodshop, um, I've actually, anyways, when we, when we talk about Um, I've actually, anyways, when we, when we talk about regional economic development, um, you know, there's, there are a bunch of different trains of thought on that, but I have a really specific example. Um, I got introduced to a gentleman who has, who has developed a new tool to repair, um, hydraulic cylinders, heavy, heavy, heavy-duty hydraulic cylinders in the field. Um, I got introduced to him through Community Futures Entre Corps, which is, you know, they serve you folks as well. He's based in Consort. He used a Medicine Hat-based engineering firm and metal fabrication shop. He used a Cypress County-based trucking company, and he's using a Red Cliff-based, um, paint shop, I believe, and he's using Roy's Woodshop to crate these things. And so he's built 10 of these, um, and they're being shipped to Hawaii, Australia, Texas, and, uh, one of the territories up north. Um, you know, and so that is, like, really, that's, that's one of the best examples I can think of, 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 you know, regional economic development and that, you know, that collaborative effort. So, um, you know, for what that's worth, um, you know, Red Cliff is, is helping, helping these companies move. And I'm certain Roy's Woodshop is helping Kinetic and probably Goodyear, and probably a number of other, pretty much anyone that needs to crate and ship anything. Roy's Woodshop is, is an enormous asset for this region. So, um, that's just a story I wanted to share, cause it's, it's pretty new. It's, it's fresh in my mind, so.
Okay, well, thank you Quentin for the presentation. Um, I don't see anybody else with any questions, but I guess what we could do is take this to heart, and if we do run across people in our community, or know somebody that might benefit this, to definitely pass the word on to get in touch with you, because you would be better talking to them than us trying to explain what you just explained to us, so. But we can definitely do that.
You know what, I really appreciate that. And Eric and I talk fa- fairly regularly, so, um, you know, I'll kinda keep pestering him till he tells me to stop too, so.
Okay.
Anyways, I appreciate it, everybody, I'll let you get on with your meeting, I'll sign off.
All right, thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
You too. Bye.
Pardon me Eric?
I said I'll move that for information.
Okay, thank you. Eric? All in favor of receiving for information, opposed, that is carried. And we'll move on to the public hearing. So I will declare, or open up the public hearing for bylaw 1923 slash 2021, being a bylaw to amend by law 1698 slash 2011, being the land use bylaw. To allow C cans as a discretionary use in a P1 zone.
I'll make the first, let it move it.
No, no, we're just, this is open house.
Oh.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah. So, does anybody in the room have anything they want to say? Shannon, did you get any?
No, I received no written or verbal, uh, comment. So Duncan, though, what's, carry us out? If anyone would, if you folks, if you can say yours.
Yeah, he told me he was only here to rebut anything that somebody said.
That's not what he told me. I said I was your resource, so you wouldn't have to try and.
Oh, that's what it was, yeah, yeah. So does anybody have anything they wish to say of the public hearing? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we'll move on to minutes. First item up on minutes is the council meeting held April 26th of 2021 for adoption. Kathy? There's a spelled correction, where you have, uh, Leadership Caucus. It says Leadership Causes. No, I know we're blamed for everything, but we shouldn't be causing it. It's on, uh, page 29 of 101, under B 2021 dash 0214. That's the only, that was just a little typo, so, other than that, I got none. Anybody else have anything? And all in favor of receiving for adoption, opposed, that is carried. And, let's look the page. The next item up is the Cypress Regional Waste Management Authority Minutes. Larry, moves for information. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. And then the Red Cliff and District Recreation Committee meeting held May 5th. For information. Chris? Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. Okay, we move on to bylaws. First item up is bylaw 1923 slash 2021, being a bylaw to amend by law 1698 slash 2011, being a land use bylaw.
I'll put it on the floor for second reading.
Shawna, for second. Any questions, concerns? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. And would somebody like to put it on for third? Larry? Any questions or concerns? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. Next bylaw up is 1925 slash 2021, being the 2021 tax rate bylaw, and it's here tonight for all three readings. Would somebody like to put it on the floor for first reading? Chris? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. Would somebody like to?
I'll move second.
Okay, Eric, for second. Any questions or concerns? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. Would somebody like to move it be presented for third? Kathy? Must be unanimous to proceed. All in favor, opposed, it is carried unanimously. Would somebody like to move it for third? Jim? Any questions or concerns? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. Last bylaw amendment is 1926 slash 2021, being a bylaw to amend by law 1698 slash 2021, being a land use bylaw. It's here for first reading.
Table for first.
Kathy? Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. All right, requests for decisions. Strategic planning, 2022 to 2026 goals for consideration. Chris?
I'll go with option three to get public feedback.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns? About option three? I believe it's on page... Too far, 55, there it is.
53?
Page 54.
Just one topic too far, yeah, here, there, one, there you go. So it's just. Just to get public feedback.
Well, if he's got any questions, oh, go ahead Eric.
I kinda think that the, the way we have it is, it's just fine. I don't think we can get it much better than that. I don't know that we have to plan this to death.
I agree, I don't think it's gonna change much, but it is nice to just present it to the public anyways, in my mind. Probably splitting hairs though, at the end of the day, you're right.
Well, we'll just call it for a vote then. All in favor of option three? Four, opposed, it is carried. So I guess that's... It didn't know what to do with that. All right, temporary patio space for town-owned, on-town-owned property for consideration. Chris?
Yeah, I'll make it again, sorry, I'm being all here.
That's okay.
Um, I'll go with option one to approve it. Uh, I kinda like it in the park myself, and I really like the forward thinking.
Okay. So, all right.
And I also don't need to excuse myself for peculiar interest, cause I won't be taking advantage of this at all.
Yeah, that's, this is definitely nothing.
Go ahead Shawna.
I'm in favor of having an outdoor picnic space also. I just feel right at the moment with construction going on with Memorial Park, that another area would be more suitable until construction is done.
I don't imagine there's gonna be 40 picnic tables out there?
No, there's only six.
Yeah, and that doesn't take up much space, you can hug the other side of the park. Um, that's a nicer location for aesthetics-wise, and more centralized for the restaurants, I thought. Construction's a concern, of course, but I don't think it'd be intrusive. I'm just happy to have it anywhere, to be honest.
Anybody else? Kathy?
I was just wondering for administration, has, was any thought, was there any thought about putting out a few more picnic tables at Lions Park?
I don't think we had discussed that at all.
No, there's been no discussion on that. It's certainly a possibility to put, put picnic tables out there, but the idea of this was to get sort of closer to the downtown where businesses are, and I mean, a bit of a trek to bring food all the way back to that direction.
I was thinking more along the lines where you, you have the water park there, and I see a lot of families sitting there on the grass, eating and watching their kids. So it might be nice to have a few picnic tables there for them as well.
Yep, certainly could be considered.
Okay, anybody else? So Chris's motion was for Memorial Park. Right?
Yeah, I said option one though. I should've said option two, I'm sorry. Option two is really what I want.
Okay. Well, you said option one, but the park.
I did, yeah. I think the empty prairie beside here isn't as appealing.
Well, the view isn't as good, I think.
Right.
Okay, so it's actually option two?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Any other comments? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. All right, so then we have the water line to the cemetery, and they're requesting a three-inch water line, so it has to come to council for consideration.
I'll make that motion, option one, to install that three-inch line.
Okay, thank you. Shawna?
What is the cost of the replacement of this line, and where are these funds coming from for this project?
So we've done some estimating on the cost. It'll probably be in the neighborhood of $2,500 or so. Um, some of the parts we have in our inventory over in the Public Works yard, um, some of it will have to be bought through contractors. And what was the second part of the question?
Where's the money come from?
The money, the money will be coming from just regular operations funds.
Any other questions? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. And then moving on to correspondence, we have the Palisser Airshed Society Station Summary Report for information, Shawna?
For information.
Anybody with questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, receiving for information, opposed, that is carried. Okay, we move on to Didsbury, the.
I'll, that motion?
Eric?
Receive for information.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. Then we have Town of McRath, support for RCMP.
Receive for information.
Kathy? Any questions or concerns?
Should we be making a letter like this ourselves, perhaps?
Definitely something we can discuss.
I think in the future we should write a letter, whether it's one way or the other, on that topic.
Well, if you were really fast at saying the next one, you could get that into the motion.
Well, let's put it in the next one then.
Right now, this is just for information.
I think there's another one anyways.
There is, there's a couple more before we switch topics, yeah.
Yes.
Can't we do these all at once?
No, each one's a separate letter, Jim.
Yeah, but I know, but they're all the same thing.
No, they're actually very different.
The letters are all different.
The one was very well-written even.
Wow, yeah.
Anyway, no, they're all well-written. One had way more points than some others. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor of receiving for information, opposed, that's carried. Then we have the Town of Edson, support for the RCMP. Is that it? You're just moving it for information? Yep. Okay, Jim? Any questions or concerns? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. Cause this could be the last police one, County of St. Paul.
I'll make the motion, that we.
Receive for information, man?
And that we make our own letter of support for the RCMP.
Any questions or concerns? Larry?
Well, I think, um, what perhaps our provincial government might be trying to do is rip a page out of Quebec's book and put a little pressure, so we get a little fairer deal from Ottawa. And I, you know, I, I think that's what they're trying to do here. We'd likely be better off to stay a little bit and see how it works out.
Okay. Anybody else? Kathy?
Did Chris just want to clarify his motion a little bit, that it be sent to Minister Madu?
Madu?
Sorry, yes, I'll take that friendly amendment, to send it to Mr. Casey Madu, which is fun to say.
Are we sending it to the AUMAs as well?
Oh, yeah.
I think everybody's sent it to everybody, that's why we keep getting them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, most of them have sent it to the AUMAs, the RMA, a couple of different ministers, one sent it to MacGyver and Madu, and then, well, so did this one, and.
I don't think we need to send it to every other town in the province, though.
Well, I guess it's just, just like this, it's just more jog, right? It's electronic, we're not mailing them.
Yeah, I know.
But it had an impact, obviously. Chris wanted to make a motion?
Yeah, good point. Okay. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. Right, then we have the Town of Tofield for rural Alberta vaccine provisions.
To receive for information.
Shawna? Any questions or concerns? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. And then the Municipality of Crow's Nest Pass, Re the Eastern Slopes Coal Exploration.
Receive for information.
Kathy? Kathy, receiving for information. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. Right, move on to other, we have the Municipal Manager Report to Council for Information. Shawna?
To receive for information, plus I have a few questions.
Okay.
We'll start with, in your manager's report, you said you had meetings with developers on both North Side and East Side. Are you having any headway with these developers?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Good. The next question, Parks and Rec, how are we coming along with River Valley Park washrooms?
River Valley Park Washroom is probably at about a 40% completion right now, so documents are created. We've done our initial ask around the environment portion, there is no environmental hurdles to go through, and we just internally handed off that project from our group down to the planning group. So I think we're well on our way to get that looked after this year.
Thank you. In the facilities report, it was stated that there was repaired damages to the concession building as necessary. What were the damages done to that building?
I'd have to get back to you on that, because I don't know.
Okay. Next question, in regards to the Community Peace Officer, he stated that there was parking plates, parking complaints that had increased. Was this in a certain area?
My recollection around that is parking complaints at Tim Hortons, around Tim Hortons, and I believe also at the schools.
Okay, so then all 20 complaints weren't just Tim Hortons?
No.
Okay. There was another statement, and it was working with the RCMP and city police, and this has made posed risks to CPOs working for the town. Can you explain that?
New caution locations.
New caution locations.
That's normally a standard statement, that when there's high-risk offenders, when there's more wants and warrants, then our CPO is made aware of those as well, so he can vet them for himself for traffic stops or any other encounters that he may have.
Okay. The next is more of a statement than anything, under Municipal Works, street sweeping's ongoing. Is there possibly some way, even whether it's our website or online or something, to say what streets are being swept, what days, to make it a little easier for residents to make sure that vehicles are off streets that particular day, and so that we are aware of where we're at?
So, sorry, Darren, so Darren and I have spoken, and they are creating a map for next year, so that we can put it out more in a zoned approach, so people can be notified, and with posts on our website and our Facebook page, so people are aware.
Thank you.
And they have been using the signs, so...
Some, yeah, they sometimes get out of that zone.
Yeah.
Under Water and Sewer Utilities, there was a noise complaint, and has that issue been addressed?
So we got that complaint last week. Darren had reached out to our contractors to see if they could get in, to get it fixed, and they haven't been able to with the rain, but it is scheduled, and we are mitigating it as much as possible. The fan does take water out, or moisture, humidity out of the water treatment plant, and again, Darren advised this morning that him and Jeff are working out a plan for, to have it inspected twice a year, to make sure that we're proactive instead of reactive.
Thank you.
I can hear that from my area, actually, it's gotten worse.
The next question is, for the radio read meters, what percentage are we done on that?
I didn't gather that information, so I don't know, but I can get that information.
Okay, because I know that we're ongoing at getting that done, so I was just wondering where we're at with that. One of the other questions, which was still underwater in sewer utilities, there was a statement stating scanning homes for move-in, move-out. What is that? I've never, what does scanning mean?
Probably the radio...
You have to read the meter when they move out?
Oh, well, it said scanning, I just wasn't...
Yeah, that's what they do.
Okay. I was wondering if it was something special. Nope. Okay. Moving on to landfill. When is the, or not when, is the compost sale ready, and is it being used now?
No, that project's not finished.
It's not finished yet?
No, we still, we're still waiting for some equipment to come in.
Okay.
That was in the landfill minutes.
Yes.
Recycling site, where are we at with this?
We have gathered a list that Elisa and Shannon and I have to go over, review, and prep an item, we've scheduled that, and to be at your next council meeting.
Perfect. That is the last of my questions, unless there's something you want to point out to us.
No, everybody is just working hard, really hard to balance our projects in our day-to-day.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, Shawna will move them for information, all in favor. Eric left us, opposed. He's still there?
Yeah, he's still there, he's just flipped his camera.
It's just dark, okay.
Yeah.
It's carried.
He's in the dark.
All right, so let's move on to landfill graphs for information. Larry? Any questions or concerns of any of the landfill graphs? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. And council important meetings and events, for information.
I'll make that motion.
Shawna? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. Do we need a five-minute recess? No, all right, then let's, would somebody like to move us into closed?
Going closed.
Kathy? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. We'll let Shannon open the door, before somebody moves, we appoint...
Read the weight.
Jim, you're doing that, too?
Yep.
Jim? Library Board?
Yeah.
Till the end of this year, or what?
End of next year.
End of next year?
Yeah.
So December of 2022? Right. Any concerns, discussion, all in favor, opposed. Somebody want to move a German? Jim? Concerns, all in favor, opposed, it's carried.